Meeting is called in order, first order of business is the minutes. On the August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting, but there any additions or corrections? If not, I would like a motion approved. So, this made second, okay, signify that I oppose, this made carry. Now, on our request to appear before the council, we have, I have a C is water study, S E H. I assume most of the crowd is here for that talk. So, if anybody would like to give a brief overview of your concerns, I think we're all aware of it, and we're actually on path to hopefully reach for the solution. And we have S E H here with us that has been doing a study, and James is here too, that basically seeks to correct emissions, so you won't have the same concerns in the future. It's not going to be quick and it's not going to be cheap. But, I don't know how you want to see it, but I would just assume make a presentation of what we've been doing this summer out of the water tower to come up with a solution that makes us out of this. If that's okay.
Uh, I wanna, let's give it a second and, and... I'll be interested in hearing what everybody has to say, and they make a mistake about that, I'm touching through all these problems as much as the rest of you. But one of the problems I have with the city, and I think the city should, should listen up on this, is that we've been having this water problem go on for more than a year, year and a half, whatever. And the city has never really openly gone to the residents of the town and said, "Here's what we're doing, here's what you're gonna have happen, here's what you're gonna see, here's what you should do in certain circumstances," and basically explained to the residents of our office. It's all going on silently. You wake up in the morning, you go flush the stool, and some brown stuff comes through there that looks worse than what went down the toilet. So, it's, it, it's a bad thing, from my point of view, the sound, the town won't bad off with people telling them what's going on and what they are doing, because you are doing things, you have been doing things. We just don't know what you've been doing.
And I think that's what we want to do here tonight.
Yeah, but it's a year and a half into it, and that's the, and that's the... You, you should have been communicating, instead of hoping that nobody will notice and they won't ever call you up and so forth and so on, there should have been some communication. I know we're not a big town, but gosh, even a forum letter going around explaining all of this and what you're doing to mitigate, especially the brown water, uh, would have been, I think, a good gesture on the part of, of the city.
And, and in defense of the council, I think you've become so inert to the situation. I mean, seventy-one years old, and this is nothing new, I mean, it's the heavy, uh, overload of iron magnes in the water.
I've lived here for fifteen years, what happened last year was an order of magnitude worse than anything I've seen in that, in that fifteen, in that year.
And, and we're trying to address it.
Yeah, but, but, and I understand that, but only now that there's about twenty people in here that want you to own up and give us your plan, how was your plan before?
The plan was, we had S E H out of the water tower this summer designing a, coming out of the plan that will, uh, eliminate that resource through an expansive filtration system.
But what did all the work of the water tower do last year? That was supposed to, to clean up the water tower and make the water good and everybody to be happy. Are you saying this is a failed water power? This stuff at the tower had nothing to do with the water quality. That had to do with the water, the water tower failing. And then we also did a little bit more studying with the chemicals, our chemical guys, to try treating it chemically, and we got to the point where we can't do that anymore, so that's why we now want to announce out of that.
We didn't have all these brown water problems before you started.
The, the water quality is getting worse and worse.
Yeah, I guess you gotta back up a little bit, Steve was talking about a year ago, this, the water, the water tower thing was a whole big, two issue, I mean, so, uh, I guess I, I'd be interested to, if it's been bad for a year, why would, why would it be bad for a year? I mean, that's what, uh, they're really looking at.
Ours has been bad for years.
We know that the water quality has been bad for, for any goal, is that through the fire department?
But, but I, I guess, what, what happened, if Steve says he was good a few or three years ago, or a lot of time?
Sure, we had the once every few months, whatever, flushing the, flushing the pipe out, and then it gets the brown water, okay, that, that's Thomas, and almost everybody was Thomas. But the last year, we got the brown water and it was getting concert with the water tower, whatever improvements, whatever you're doing, you stirred up something and made something different. Right, it was getting stirred up every week with construction and stuff down that way. And that's what we contributed to, but now, we don't know. That's why we got S E H here. So, I'll go back to my original point, nobody communicated. You guys know what's gonna happen when you go up there and get the state and start shoveling the bottom of the water tower? But, but nobody ever told any of the citizens, "Hey, what's going on, you can expect this?" And that's the thing that I wanna communicate, isn't it?
Uh, I think we've done that very effectively, and I'd like to move into...
Good.
The examination, what we've done, and where we're trying to go, but Chris, can you?
Yeah, I can, I can let her know what's happening currently, so, um, S E H started in, uh, in August, a pilot study of the water system, so, we brought a, a water plant on a trailer essentially, uh, up to the water tower site, uh, connected up to the wells directly, and, uh, we're trying different ways to treat the water, to get it, you know, remove the rust, do anything else, anything to happen to it, so, we had an operator in that trailer for a couple of weeks, trying different methods of treatment, uh, and, uh, it was fair done mid-August, took about two or three weeks, I think, he was up there, I believe, and we're currently in the analysis portion of our, of our study, so, uh, we're, we're being able to pretty mature and actually bring out the results, but, I mean, uh, as far as what's currently going on, what's going to happen, so we'll take the, the study, the field results we got, put it into a report, put that into, uh, into a, a pilot study, which we use as a facility report, kinda showing all the existing conditions and potential treatment options, so, uh, as part of that, it'd be sizing, the size of the plant, water plant, if necessary, the cost that'd be associated with that, uh, and, and the city needs that information to try to find funding to, to treat the water, so, uh, we were first brought to the, the study of the water quality back in about May, and then first council meeting, I was at our water quality discussion, I'm sure discussing with that too, but, um, we were looking at help there in August with our, our trailers, pretty well booked out in many cities, so, by the time I get out there, it's probably, yeah, a month and a half ago, so, so where we're at right now is just kinda calling information, and in a couple of weeks, we could bring some, uh, draft, uh, results to, to council, uh, to review, and, uh, we can complete that study in the next six, four to six weeks, uh, in a file format, so, uh, yeah, as far as, uh, the financial that, uh, the person did the study is named John Dome, he's not here today, uh, people in our water could be at the meeting today, so, uh, I, I wanna provide results that I can't explain thoroughly, but, uh, those people will be at the next council meeting.
Is it only testing at the well?
So, the, the testing is happening at, there's two wells in town, one, one or two, uh, well one of the tower, well two is located, um, a few blocks east of here, um, the city does testing throughout the town, you're, you're testing, uh, you're handling samples of water, uh, and so that's gonna be finding for the distribution side, so what we're looking at is on the treatment side initially, which is to remove contaminants before it gets into the pipe. Now, if you have years of buildup of things in the pipe already, now that, that would take time to thoroughly flush out, but what we're looking at is eliminate the point source.
You've already been treating the water for months, you had a year.
Yeah, there's two different kinds of treatment, primarily less chemical treatment, which is essentially what the city's doing now, uh, to take the next step is to do filtration, so, if you run the water through media, the stuff, the water, between the iron, the solids, uh, the solids that are in the water from the well sources, so, the chemicals are doing one thing, but they can't remove things necessarily as far as...
There was no notification about the lack of chemical for being used to treat the water. It's, yes, it, it's in our consumer confidence reports, and those reports come out every year on what we use and what we treat for.
Reports that come out, where do they go?
It's...
Newspaper or website, they're, they're on, if you look, if you look on the website, they're on like the last eight or ten years, probably, uh, prior to you being on the, on the, in the newspaper, they're like, uh...
It, it's, it breaks down everything, they would do, we, we sample quarterly, all of them, quarterly samples are there, um, all our lead copper samples are there, then we... Posting something on a website doesn't constitute notifying.
Well, I'm sorry if I've been knocking on the door to help explain that thing to you, but any time you wanna ask, I think, myself or a council member, what they know about the problem.
I think there's a principle involved here, if you're waiting, that is, when the city, when the city takes action to treat the water supply, there's an obligation, good form of population.
And any information's public.
And, and publishing something in the, in, in a website is not an appropriate notification for those kind of things, you might think it is, but how does anybody know to go and look at?
This is another subject altogether, what we're, what we're trying to describe is the track we're on, Festivate in our gun store said, uh, "The water's not gonna clear up until you take out the creek." And we're looking at the taking out the creek by going to the source, Henderson's water is, uh, six hundred foot deep well, it's pure water.
We, we come out of the Jordanographer, that's what fifty towns within our area pulled water out of the Jordanographer. Yeah, you got two wells, right? You got two wells. Do all of those wells pump to the water tower? Yes. So, everything goes to the water tower and then goes to the community.
Yep.
So, there's nobody being differentially served, uh, from the two wells, and you're saying that the quality out of the wells, yeah, I'm trying to...
It's heavily loaded with iron and magnesiums.
Why weren't they, I know this is an obvious question, but they weren't that way before the water tower approval was started, yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, it's always been, it's...
That's always been, we're not getting the brown water for it, okay? Yeah, we're, you, you, there's probably some people have, but a lot of people...
I mean, that's, I think that's, that's part of the, the challenge, and, so I have a question as to whether or not this is, you know, the, the whole town is dealing with the brown water or not, because I think we have a heavily populated group from Maple Ridge, and I know myself, we get our water off of Maple Ridge, where my neighbor gets hers off of Woodland, and there's a big difference between the quality of groundwater right next door, coming out of Woodland, than there is mine coming off of Maple Ridge.
Yeah, if it is spot, it doesn't happen uniformly all over the city. Depends on where the disruption is.
And that's, that's part of the treating chemically, rather than treating, treating it right at the source with filters, treating chemically, it might break down a mile from the source, might break down next door, you don't know that so much.
So much money is being wasted on the chemicals, why don't you just treat it right away?
Well, that's what we're...
That's, because in the past, I'll go back up twenty years, twenty years ago, we had, you know, insane concern with everybody, and everybody with the consensus, the council, said, "Okay, rather than spending four million dollars to do this, everybody's done that has problems with the water, gonna put in their own small system, like reverse osmosis of our water filtering and stuff like that," and that was fine with everybody, back, you know, twenty years, and then ten years ago, it came up again, and so we...
Because it's causing me and on our equipment, and some of the animals.
And we're seeking a solution, and that's...
And now, now that...
Now it's twenty years in.
But nobody wanted to spend the money putting in the filters.
That's an extremely expensive situation, in your water, yeah, it's your water.
Taxes, taxes don't go towards water, use it easy.
Yeah, it's costing us a lot of money.
And now it's gonna, now it's gonna cost you a lot more for the filtration systems.
Um, I, well, why is money needed for, for your guys' estate twenty years ago?
I mean, I wanted, and be able, be able to for twenty years. And the situation was, it was a reaction to the price tag of how much it was going to cost.
So, but it's still a poor decision made twenty years ago, they're now worse, wasn't it?
I mean, a lot of...
I mean, like, bill of grants, don't need to work, because I work for the company, and I hope there's a lot of money out there that could possibly help the situation, has anybody done that?
As we, as we come up with the solution, we will seek grant money to help make it more affordable.
And there's a lot of money out there, but it still remains really expensive.
The most likely scenario is you're gonna end up with a six million dollar project, you're gonna get a grant for about sixty-five percent, that's based on household income and what's all going on here, you're gonna end up with a project that's gonna cost, still after that, about three point five million dollars, that three point five million dollars by a four hundred percent, a four hundred, well, usually, it's gonna, it's gonna mean that, uh, everybody down here didn't get any thousand dollar settlement, or thirty-five dollar, forty dollar...
But you're paying for what you're expecting, so with that money you'd be running?
Mm-hmm.
From, here's one that you guys are gonna be getting, where's that gonna be, is that eighty-five, two or two?
They can apply it, six, it'll be forty-two, they can apply it to ninety thousand with that, that'll take the, that'll, that'll take the six million dollars, six million dollars by a plant, nine, you know, so, if you're getting grants, no doubt about it, they'll be eligible grants, typically based on our income in the last instance, we would have been eligible for forty-six percent. The new income level for what's out here now, our all the efficiency, but everything we're hearing is that we'll be eligible for about forty-two percent grant, based on income levels in Henderson, uh, for this type of project, so, and that, that's where it's the same, it is the same place as it was ten years ago, twenty years ago, uh, five years ago, we were, I think, brought up, it's, you, it's, is the city council willing to make a motion to say, "Yeah, we're, we're gonna on January first of this year, increase everybody's water rates by thirty bucks a month, pay for this potential, whatever, I mean, we're ready, our, our water plant after we pay, uh, that, after we pay S E H for doing this study, it's gonna be negative in two thousand and, uh, and, and twenty, in twenty months." City has not increased water rates in, in your, you know, they have not increased that rate in...
Uh, that's not true.
Does not, it a hundred percent is not.
Water, water rates, I'll go back then, can, grab the data and bring it back to the council, but both water rates haven't been stacked, and the other thing is, you're talking about fixed plant costs, okay, that's only a million dollars, whatever, that's gonna get bonded out, whatever, that's can't get grants for, and then, you're gonna come to the water rates, and you're gonna charge everybody for the regrain cost, so that's an additional charge that everybody will bear, that probably doesn't have much to do with the capital installation of whatever is your plan put in. I'm having a problem with this, because I think this all started with the water tower, and you guys are gonna probably deny it forever, but the really bad brown water came to my house when the water tower renovation was go...
Yes, ours, no, not at our house, we had ours for years. This is before all the water tower work, this is, this has been an existing problem.
I think it was a problem.
At our house. I know, I know for years I've been running my water to get one, four or five pitchers of water to make it out, to get a clean pitcher of water, put my fridge, that's not for years.
You get my fellow doing good, because we...
Yes, exactly.
But I think the water tests, this is not just for us.
Okay, so, so this kind of thing is, is going on, I'm in an area that probably ten or fifteen years old in terms of infrastructure built around it.
Probably twenty-two, twenty-nine, the stuff was putting everything in there.
And so now, I mean, the case she's making is if you're in an area that's had your pipes in for a long time, you had the problem for a long time, they've been, they've been happy to get, uh, soak it up all this iron, and it comes through, and the newer your pipes are, the farther away you are from it, but anyway, uh, so, I understand the case you're trying to make, but still, for me, this didn't start until the water tower, and then it started with vengeance, and I don't know how you go from basically brown water when they're flushing, okay, which is once or twice a year, that was my situation, and then all of a sudden, month after month after month, it's all brown water. What, what is going on to release all that continuously, to change in the way the system is working? And, and you're not gonna convince me that somehow the wells have been bad for years, um...
The well is not bad, the well, water...
Where's the iron coming from?
Higher, higher than maybe.
The deeper the well, the more iron you're gonna get, that's right.
And we are on path to hopefully solve this problem, with partially there, Chris has described where we're going with this, and we will have a system to look at, I don't know, weeks, month, and, uh, I think we're all committed to coming up with a solution to the situation.
Well, I think there are certain...
And, and I, I, I just don't want you to monopolize the whole meeting, because we have other visitors to, to attend to later, and I, and I, I want to share the public that, you know, we understand, everybody in town has the same situation, depending on what the shock to the system is, uh, the fire department threw a lot of water over the weekend, I finally have rusty water, I usually don't, and I, my pipes are a hundred years old, and, you know, so it, it isn't a matter of age of the pipe, it's the deposits of rust and magnes, iron rust and magnes in the pipe, so it's broken loose, it colors a lot, uh, and we are headed towards a solution for it. It's not gonna be next week, because we have the science system that actually works, and after that's gone, uh, so it's gonna have a worse way out of the place, but, uh, the water is, is as pure or clean as it can get, except that it's really hard to water.
So, you keep talking about, you know, testing the well, is there a plan to assess the water after the well, because you keep referencing testing it at the source?
Well, I wanna say testing it...
How do we know what the, the plan that you're looking at may fix a piece of that, but if there's something wrong between the well and Maple Ridge, who's looking at that? What does that plan look like to really assess to say, "The well is great, but there's something happening in between here"?
Well, yeah, what's happening in between there is you got deposits of, of iron rust and magnes.
When has anybody ever tested it?
Yeah, that's my question too, is they didn't test it after it's pumped up to Maple Ridge? Because we're getting it tested and all that, so it's...
Yes, well, we, we don't actually test for iron and magnes, magnes, um, we test for basically bacteria, your fluoride, of course, and our polymers, that polymers that we use to sequester the iron, and that's the catalyst for your iron deposits. So, as far as the state is in our testing, I mean, the water is, is the biggest thing is the V E G O, or that we test for, you know, quarterly, and that's the, should say, the bad thing, and that we never, ever fail a V E G O test.
Do you test in home, where does that water come from when you test that?
Where do I test from?
Yeah, does it come from people's things, does it come from the lives outside my houses, does it come from the...
Um, most of the testing comes from the booster station right below Maple Ridge, so everything that's one up Maple Ridge, that's where we get tested from, we test from Fire Hall, we test from City Hall here, we test from, there's a couple of residences that I test from, that I can get in easy enough, um, we've tested Allison's Park, Bender, Bender Park, um, it's, uh... Anything on Maple Ridge? Huh? Anything on Maple Ridge? Before it goes up to Maple Ridge, who tests?
And we're gonna need a test, okay, if it makes people who are comfortable, they get something...
But we don't, we're not, we're not, uh, required to test for iron and magnes.
Right, right, you're not gonna discover it anymore.
How many system we're requested, are requested to test it at the source, and we do that, she, the department hall comes down and tests that themselves. Why do those pipes have so much iron buildup in them? Because of... We are chemically treating the iron and magnes, and, uh, with the polymer that, what it does, it, it holds onto the iron, back, or not bacteria, the iron molecules, and keeps it in suspension as much as possible, so it's not disposable. Every once in a while, you'll have, the biggest thing is the temperature change, and dips in the pipe where we'll settle out, and then say if you have somebody open a hydrant, or you get a big, uh, slumber people showering all at one time, or watering is the big thing, watering the ponds, you'll get the surges coming through and, and pouring the red water out of them, dips and, and holes. So, a different kind of very pipe that could be used that won't, but can't accumulate iron or... No, because you have to treat the water before it gets out of the system, and we've never done that, we've always done it just with chemicals.
Uh, well, maybe you can answer this, and I could be completely wrong, I don't know a lot of the scenarios, I'm just asking a question.
Sure.
Um, did we somehow like share a different water tower or something, but the store didn't have to stop, does that have anything to do with that, or was it wastewater?
City, uh, city, city events in the store.
That's right.
For, for the water testing, the city events in the store have never cooperated with that.
Is it wastewater or something?
Wastewater, we, we still, our wastewater program is the city, yeah.
Okay, I was just wondering if there was a change... Okay, okay, I was just wondering if there was a change in that that you believe.
The issue, I think, with this water business, and I've been saying it all along, you got a pipe going up here. Up there. So, and then I believe it comes around and then a dead end, right? No, there's no dead end. There's no dead end? No. That does make a circle, or is that under the drill? It makes, everything makes a circle. We, we basically.
Back to the line cover?
No, no. We basically have four, four zones, okay? We got the downtown area, you know, and that's all, every, every block is looped. And then there's the kind of by the Catholic church there, you know, that's kind of its own area and that's, that's looped in there and that loops around. And then Maple Ridge gets, gets pumped up, that, that pump station right at the bottom of Minnesota Street there, that brown building, that pumps it up into Maple Ridge to give you enough pressure up, up there. And I think that is part of the problem too, is every time those pumps kick on off, I mean, it gives a surge to disrupt the, you know, the water that's in the pipe. What time you got, why are you talking about building and getting a side of that?
Okay, but I'm, I'm having trouble understanding your loop. Where does the loop go to on the return side?
It just loops the whole side. Okay, so it goes up into Maple Ridge, it goes the whole Maple Ridge loop. So sunset, it comes up sunset and it does a whole Maple Ridge loop.
And then dead end.
No.
No, there's one pipe coming in.
It just circling, it just.
Pressure raises the whole system.
Right, because basically that's a dead end loop then, you're feeding it with a big.
Because anybody opens their tab, it can tell.
It doesn't come back down, but.
It's not considered, it's not considered a.
Dead ended up there, what goes up there doesn't come back.
Right, stays up there and that.
Okay, it's not like a circulating system that you have.
That's what they finish, man. That one's a, ten that goes up there. Okay, so you got a lot of dead water sitting in that loop? That's just a pipe.
Yep. So a question out of the, one of the, is it going to cost six million dollars to put a new well up there? We, I know I do know what, what would be the cost?
Oh, uh, the source put in one now, and I think it's, I can't tell you, who else? I'd say around two million just for a well.
So you're talking six million of fix the problem? A third of that cost to put a well up there?
We could not put a well.
I see what you're holding me that pushing uphill creates a problem.
Not.
What pushing uphill?
Not if you treat it at the source, then you don't have that iron in the water.
But that's what you've been doing.
That's what we have been doing.
And you still have the problem.
Yeah, but we haven't been treating it at the source. We don't have a filtration system to take that iron and manganese out of the system. If we have that in place, anywhere it goes, it's not in there anymore.
Where you're, where you're this.
Yes.
God for the source for.
Right.
I would be the same source for the new well.
Oh, I understand that.
Well, that would be rude.
Okay, I'm going to do it with an example for Maple Ridge, example. Think about what we're doing, okay? Out by, um, Wolf Mullards and everything up there, that's basically Maple Ridge. They have a pump station down below the hill that pumps it up and serves everybody up on top of the hill. It's a loop system, but everything that goes up there stays up there. They don't have no problem at all because it's treated at the water.
With the filtration.
With the filtration.
Takes the iron and manganese out of the.
Takes everything out, takes the silt, iron, manganese, um, manganese.
So I think one thing, just to help get us out of here a little bit, I mean, we can sit here and figure about this all week long.
True.
I think one thing the council's got to recognize, and I know you're new to being mayor, and some of you guys are different, but not speaking for everybody in here, but even myself, but I think this is going to be similar if you speak to people that this is probably the first time that it's been admitted that there's a problem. So I think moving forward, if we can admit that there's a problem and establish a plan to fix it, and not throw all numbers and, and big scary numbers that there's going to be a ten thousand dollar settlement or that. Because if anybody's going to put in a system here to fix it, the system that I put, had to put in was six thousand dollars to start out with, and then have them come back and tell us that the water's still bad, and it's another six thousand, the upgrade of the system to completely fix it, people are going to be spending that money. So I don't think it's going to be efficient if we sit here and debate on what the problem is and what power to fix it or if we're going to do this. But if you guys are making the point now that we're admitting that there's a problem, now we're going to put a plan in place that we're going to try to fix the problem, and we can all agree with what the natural acceptable solution is, on what the water quality of the city that we have stocked in the neighborhood, then we can go somewhere, but otherwise, I mean, we're, we're just wasting time here.
Well, I think, I mean, I like it all the way down, right? You've got to figure out how to get that stuff out of the water because that is the way it is with the water. But I think the other part is addressing probably the main line that's up in Maple Ridge Circle. And how does that pipe, that, how does that loop get cleaned out? Because even after, you know, all of this happens.
Do you think?
There are changing the water of course, unless we get all that years of buildup out of that pipe. That's got to be part of, that's got to be just, I think, part of what the solution is.
That is why you're going to have a loop. Well, I'll go back to nineteen ninety, ninety-nine Norwood when they put their new pipe down. It took them eight months to clear the water. And that's what flushing, so once everything's in place, it'll clean up.
Yeah, James, I, I talked over with our waters here, one year's pretty typical, so it, that's part of the improvement, basically. We're trying to stop backfilling the iron by treating it at source so that it kind of, you run water, it's not adding more iron to it. So you have to get it out at the source and you need to get it out on the distribution side, distribution side. It's usually a lot of flushing, and that's what it's going to take. So you're going to be dealing with some dirty water and flushing here, hopefully it's less and less and less as you go. So it's going to be, it's a, it's a long road to the point where you have a full treatment system. Um, typically from a tired point, but the city says, I don't want to put a water plant in, at the point the water plant is fully operational and it's done, it's four years. So, um, I have a water plant going in next year, it's not going to until two thousand twenty-three, fall two thousand twenty-three. We were working on that for three years already, so it's a long road to get there unless you get the cash sitting there where you just go pay for it. So you're trying to find grant money, extra financing, which of course the city don't want to do. Because they, they say things get offset from what they are not putting onto the city, the residents, so. Uh, yes, it will take a while to get all that out of there. Um, but hopefully you're cutting out the source so you don't just keep adding to it, which is essential. What's happening there now is that, um, you're adding more iron to the water, it's not the weather house. And so if you get that treated, uh, you can get it cleared up.
So that is the path we're on. And like I said at the beginning, it won't be cheap, I don't hope it will be quick, but we'll get there eventually.
Is the city ready to make the decision to move forward with this, even if it's going to take five, eight years to get it pulled out?
Yeah, I think I can.
Sure, a hundred percent.
I, I don't think there's any question, we have to move forward, but we have to move forward, we have to know what move.
You're going to put it to the voters?
By, um.
Or you think this is something where the council makes the decision and just moves out and spends nine or ten million dollars?
So what, 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 what would we sort of order? What's my alternative?
Put it on the ballot and ask them if they want to spend that much money.
Well, that, what, what would be the ultimate deal? Just very much waiting for the ballot to turn.
Wait, 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 that's a whole new argument that we're not going to get into tonight. We are committed to a path, come up with a system that will solve our problem. We can argue about how we, the politics of it later.
This isn't politics, this is how to pay for it.
Thank you, chief, thanks for the invitation. And I hope you come back to that again, and I hope you run for council.
I can do that.
You can do that.
But, but right now, we're addressing a specific problem.
We are addressing that problem.
I have a simple question.
Make sure.
Are you going to?
No, I don't believe we will put it on the ballot.
And why not?
Because we are hard to make that decision.
This has been the problem in this town for twenty years when it comes to the government. Okay, the taxes in this city are absolutely astronomical.
Right.
And a horrible number of discussions because of the way our budget is funding the economy.
No. Thanks, everybody.
What would be another update we have on this one season?
As much as we have information, don't be discouraged.
Okay, Chris, thank you.
Thank you. I told you.
How do you want to start? Yeah, um.
Force of work.
Yeah.
Um, that's actually me, that's, no, force of. No, do you know where this is? No, no, I, uh, I was going to be peteled. They have some other issues to deal with and, and Smith can lead. Uh. I just wanted to, you know, we got, I interviewed myself, um, I work with Smith, I work with Henderson Community Foundation. Um, that's kind of my all, it's Smith and his community right now. Want one?
No.
Okay. Um, and I just wanted to kind of update you on what's going on in, um, county and some work that we've been doing in the city. Uh, typically in a regular year, um, Smith invested about five million into our twenty county area. And you can see from that county fact sheet what we're doing, the most we're coming. Um, on the map of that sheet, there's a lot of different, um, programs that we've invested in. And, you know, we like to stay in our three areas of focus, economic development, early childhood, um, support and development, early literacy, and then community vitality. So, um, we have given some money recently, um, in conjunction, we have, we have some COVID relief dollars. We're matching a community fund, in a community foundation, grant dollars, we're matching it four to one. Um, so, I mean, I should leave these off the top of my head, but, um. I think I just received a twenty-five hundred dollar grant for the park shelter, or a twenty-five hundred dollar, um, relief grant for the auto society operating costs. And, uh, twelve fifty, um, in, it looks like operating expenses. I just see something that says H C F, it's in the community. Oh, good. So, um, we're trying to, uh, you know, put money into your community in areas that the community foundation, um, sees projects. They want them to create, um, make their dollars go farther by matching that four to one. Um, we currently have matching grants, um, up to a thousand dollars for their investment community. But we also do have grant rounds, um, opening for businesses at Prosperity Initiative that, um, if there's some community members that are looking for grant dollars for their businesses, um, they can apply to that. So it's really, we really rely on you guys as our partners because I'm sure there's a lot of people in your community that don't know what South Minnesota Nation, Nation is. And we don't have the resources to be able to, you know, have put something in everybody's mailbox or even everybody's email. So, um, we hope we can rely on you folks as partners to connect those things. We'll, um, we'll have another grant round next month for, uh, early childhood. So that would be if you're having a daycare shortage in your community and people want to, um, maybe open new slots, we have one called Wrap Around Grant to kind of help them do that, which might be higher than another staff person or something like that. Um, early literacy grants, we give away hundreds of thousands of books, um, every year, we have people in communities. So we encourage any in your area that is doing a daycare program or head start program to apply for that. And then community vitality, we have, we just had, um, a small town grant round that was in place and we granted out twenty-two thousand dollars and we'll do that again next year. But, um, there's always stuff happening, there's always, uh, money and programs that we're granting out and training. So just keep checking our website and make sure you're on mailing list, um, or make cards in there. Call me, text me. Let me know what you're, what you're looking for, like I said, I'm sorry, I can't help with the water crisis. Um, am I good? I threw some great dollars towards that, but I don't think that's not a dark programming, so.
You remain very special. I wondered why I'm there.
Why I wasn't screaming anything? No, I found that doesn't really help. Don't upset him here. Could we put some of this information on the website? So this is what the grants are available with? Yeah. Yeah, the, or even in your, if you're, there's a way to link our page to your website to direct those.
On the old jet, I definitely went, I, it doesn't get a go to Dr. Payton, right?
Okay, yeah.
Just matters all of them, you know.
And it's really those focus areas, that economic development, if you have somebody in town, I mean, we, we typically do five million in investment grants in, in a year. Last year with COVID, we did an additional twelve million. So we were hopefully helping the small businesses, you know, stay in, in business and, and bridge that time when they, um, you know, the business is so uncertain. But we do have either, you know, S E A loans that are super low interest or we have great loan officers, two women that are very passionate about what they do. And they not only will, you know, work with the client, if it's a bridge loan, you know, maybe it's a, a young entrepreneur that's wanting to start something and they just can't get it all from a bank, we can be that bridgelander and potentially hook them up with some grant money. But we not only do that, we pair that with the technical training and business training so that these people that are going to start this stuff have resources and a peer network to really succeed. And we do the same thing with early childhood, so. And offer free training for, you know, early childhood, uh, care centers or daycare centers or people's homes, they need to have continuing ed credits. We offer all of that, that class, whether it's in person or online, for free for anybody in our twenty county region, so steer people that way.
Yeah, I have, I have a team with those guys and with Purly Lakes and with the GoToTheOther flying. And, and thank you, thank you, I got time, you need to, you need to get it, man, I need to. Just because they're, they're really established based on somebody having a client place or whatever. I mean, they're not just somebody not from the yard and says, give me, give me two dollars, they're not going to get it. They, they expect that you're now a client and they're doing something. But if they're a different community operation, they need money. If they don't get, if they don't get to, uh, uh, Purly Lakes, they can give it to you and want to go to all the partnerships, you know.
Yeah, I mean, we really try to get at programs that are going to succeed, that's what we want to, we want to invest in people that are going to succeed. We have the, um, small town grant round, and I'm on that committee, and we have sixty-four applicants and we were able to fund twenty-five of them. And a lot of things were just, you know, it, it can be something as simple as the community or the organization just learned about it and didn't have enough time to put the pieces we need in, like a budget. You know, we need to see a budget, we need to.
It's not even on this, probably, probably more, I guess, it's not on the, the money, the money to fund the design and the, the, that thing we're using.
Yeah. And that's the kind of stuff that, the, those kinds of strategic planning projects that are never in a city's budget. You know, that's, that's the fluff that gets you out really, really early.
No, no, I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't win. Just how do you use your money, does it all come donation?
Yeah, uh, cities and counties are 30% of our revenue.
We, we give away, I mean, we, we, they're a private.
And then they have the private donations. Um, the small town grant project was matched by a generous donor, and he intends to do it, um, for the next four or five years. Um, he wants to divest himself of his wealth while he's still alive. And he's very invested in the program. I mean, we sat with him and looked over every grant application and, um, you know, he was, he's really interested in seeing small towns thrive and succeed. And so it's fun to have that, um, partner in some of this stuff. But yeah, we just, we ask that you have your information together and we'll work with you and have it together. We're a very small team. I mean, you look at the stuff and you think, there's so many people, uh, yeah. I joined the organization a year ago and I've noticed that how much we get done with a small crew. And it's because most of the people, the head of our early childhood program, she's been there for 30 years. Um, Mr. Penny's been there for 16 years. You know, our head of, our CFO's been there for 25 years. So it's work that they love and they're really efficient and good about doing it. We have a large endowment that we've built for 35 years and we're very conservative about spending and we stop that endowment and that's how we're able to respond completely to things. So stay in touch, go to the website or call me, I'll be fixing that.
Thank you, everybody.
Take care.
All right, next order of business, liquor license. Carol? Thanks for addressing this.
Yep. Carol, I'd like to apply for a liquor license for the Anderson Motors.
Yes.
Uh, do you have the application in front? Both the meeting and I have signed off, but you have, he's, he's, uh, he might have to start after recent assault. Uh, joint control on October 1st, so you have to decide before you enter charge for the remainder of the year. Our typical, our typical licenses were on sale at $2,000, and Sunday is $200.
So $20, $200 for the whole year?
Correct.
Did we cut that in half?
We cut it in half because you were told.
Yes.
So do you buy that by a longer months? Do we just do it, do you buy that by 12 months and charge it for?
Free.
Free, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's what we do, that's acceptable.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll do.
What will that be on?
Five hundred and fifty bucks. Five fifty, okay. Yep.
All right.
That's for 2021.
Correct. So you're clear, you should make a motion to approve these, I mean, any answers.
Yes.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion to make second, I'll hear six, five, six, nine, eight. Oh, make here.
Make sure we get any, I'll get off.
Insurance policy, I should have that come on.
Yeah, okay, okay. That means that if people leave out the meat, I'll send that off with it. And then, uh, and then when I come back from the big, like I said, that raise that should not go here until, until that Monday anyway. Yeah. I think that could, I already know.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
All right. Nothing else, um, please keep your report. Well, Chris is on, um, let's press, let's do the chief. All right, this monthly support is from August 18th to, to September 14th. Police Department of 86 calls to service. We conducted four criminal investigations. This is on the way, uh, three traffic safety issues. You don't need to incidents, you are rolling. The breakdown is a search, harassment stalking, illegal violation too. Uh, one burglary, uh, one, uh, shop protection, one juvenile rape call, two suspicious activity. 21 traffic stops, four parking violations, six assist to other agency, one alarm on our hand. 27 community policing direct patrol, four public assistance checks, five ordinance violations, one criminal arrest test, items on police calls. First smell is still the same, uh, Officer Michael, we're in the stream, he's on his own right now. Uh, we conducted mandatory support and TISA training for the program, so completed. The other ones are the, up to date. As far as the training, training, um, equipment and the supplier is made in a 30,125 miles. We'll change the schedule. Uh, then, uh, 1,00454 miles. Everything else is working, no additional expenses. And, uh, low carbon, composting DC requirements. Questions? All right. So, brother.
What do you want to do in the water?
Well, we got him in, we have a shirt.
Yeah.
He's shouting at us, I don't know if he has here.
I, I listened a little earlier, so I talked to our, John Filmon, did a study up there. Uh, he's, uh, he's in his conference, he's, John Filmon is a very experienced, uh, guy with us. He's, wanted to teach us people how to operate plants. And unfortunately, it's the time where he's been a lot of that teaching. So, uh, he said he'd be into it, uh, in September here. So we'll try to, we'll try to provide some preliminary results. Uh, one thing we had talked about is coming to, that's like council, but if you want to have a couple of council members discuss our early findings, unless you want to have with, with everybody around here. Uh, and, um, just to kind of share what we have and then make sure we have everything that you want us to provide too. So right now, we've been looking at the plant, but if it's looking at distribution side, in terms of booster station, whatever else may be involved, um, that's not necessarily part of our current proposal, but it's something that you want us to expand that pilot study a little bit and certainly do that. So we'd like to provide some preliminary results. We're seeing, um, quite frankly, your water is extremely treatable. There's nothing extraordinary about it. It needs to be treated, but there's nothing extraordinary about the state Anderson's water compared to neighboring communities. So, um, the, uh, I mean, the guy doing the testing and kind of cross things is kind of, he's expecting more from what he's hearing, so, uh, it's, it's a very treatable system, so. But we don't want to just say this is exactly what we need. We want to be able to get input back and forth. This is what you do, we have now, and this we can get out of it, um, some modifications here in our chemical system versus going all out building a filter plant. So, uh, I want to bring the right people into that, I'm not the right person for that. And so, uh, that'd be John Filmon, Tom Ned, and Tom Ned is the project manager. John Filmon is the one that should have actually field tested, so I'm hoping to bring that. Uh, we talk all late September, early October, if I get word, if I just do a, uh, just a meeting, uh, a workshop, if you will. Uh, why don't we just do a detection, it's constantly a workshop at 6 o'clock, constantly seven, and, you know, uh, whatever, however you want to approach that, so.
I mean, if you, if you try to do this, whatever, without, uh, without fully saying that something's going on in your works right now, you're gonna, you're, you're gonna get a lot of people, a lot of people thinking you're hiding something. And there's nothing, there's nothing to hide. This is, this is, and, you know, I don't know how, you know, where you guys are at, at really, there's no way anybody, you know, weigh in, and I think you're all intuitive enough, intuitive enough to know how this is going to play out. I mean, there's, there are solutions, uh, and, you know, like Chris was saying, okay, this is going to be the treatment system and everything I've seen, it's going to be a $4, $5 million treatment plan system. That's what's going to go in, but now we feel that, uh, we, we're, we are given or, or, uh, fair facts or whatever, we're on, on flat ground. I mean, we've got several years of stations that you gotta work with. You gotta booster compensation that you gotta work with, you know, like, if Chris is saying that technically a year after the fact to clean something up, my guess is in our case, it's going to be more than a year because in a town of less than 1,000 people and, uh, 400, 100 water users, we got four fricking zones. I mean, that's, uh, so, so basically, you've got to somehow clean off four of those zones out if that's where you want to go. So, uh, I'd say it's great to know that there's going to be a way to treat this system, but you're also going to have to decide, or you're, you're going to get money, you're going to get a lot of money. I mean, but a lot of money, you're going to get, it's not going to be $4 million out, which is a hell of a lot of money. But the bracket, but, if, and this is not a fire off, I mean, then it's said done. You know, I'm saying five minutes of fire, that's probably two kind of get done. This might be $7, $8 million for, for everything, they totally hit this thing, you know, cleaned up. You know, so that's, that's that money, it, it sounds cool that, yeah, we can add $90,000, $90,000 for, uh, for COVID. We can, we can use all that for this thing. Well, $90,000, $100,000, I mean, clean out, uh, is it, is it, is it too much? You know, so, uh, there's, there is no way that I can see that you're going to, that you're going to get out of, uh, charging or paying. And I would say, you know, let's see, let's see, before, uh, a comparable project, you know, this, that, and that's why this is odd in, in Henderson's history, in that comparable project is a waste of water treatment project. Henderson got pulled into that so far, Henderson was actually violating that had no permit for waste water discharge for eight years. I mean, uh, and so the sewer had no permit on the cons for 10 years. Uh, uh, whoever were the, the chief plan, whoever they are now, had no, had no permit for five years because it was all district and all things were going to work in Minnesota River. I mean, you keep full of tests, I mean, we, we stayed as far as possible away from spending anything. I mean, we, we, we took out every study, it's fired, it's prosecuted. And finally, it was, uh, police control said, well, we've finally got the sewer to bite, but then we can't go back. Now there's going to be a district plan over here. Uh, chief plan, you're worse than the city of the sewer is, so you're going back. And Henderson, we're not going to have more than one district plan on, on Minnesota River in 10 miles. You're going to the same, you figure out, uh, and they, they gave us the money. We, we moved up to the, the fourth hand drop, you remember? Uh, they paid us, that was, that was 100% grant, and when it blew out, it's 100% grant, uh, from, from the team. So we've never, we never, we never paid for much of those things. And we, and we still had to do a $1 a month sewer rate raise and $25,000 assessment, you know? And that's been too far back, I mean, we were, I won't say we were enamored, but somehow we got in a small flow on our career end that Henderson was going to grow, 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 grow. And, you know, until, until now, last four or five years, you know, that was the end game. While we, while we got ripped on that deal was Henderson's going to be 25% of this plant because it's going to be 2,000 people here in 10 years. And we stopped ready, you know, that's why, that's why we were paid all those years for that plan. And when the sewer finally bought us out is, is because of that. And we, we actually believed we were going to be 25% user on that plant. We were 5% user, 3% user, you know? So, and we, you know, and we still are, oh, why, you know, why, why bring that up? That was something that was mandated by the state and, I mean, and, uh, basically, we were made to pay $40, so it's definitely $25. Here, if, when, when, you know, if you're really going to have to roll, when do you want to start that, uh, process of stacking somebody?
We'll put it on the ballot, and then we're your best.
Exactly, exactly right. And I didn't know if we can put, I don't know if we can put revenue on the ballot, I mean, uh.
No, that's not.
Well, I think, you know, my position is we need to move forward. And the old position of the former mayor, that it was cheaper for everybody to put filtration system in their house individually than for the city to do something, I never bought that. And it might have been cheaper, but that's not the long-term solution.
You know, and, and I think we know now what the solution is, you know, and, well, we've known this for 30 years, 40 years, it was going to be a reverse osmosis type system, or, you know, something equivalent. And the price may have always been enormous, you know, and it doesn't bother me.
My water's fine, I mean.
I mean, yeah, my water's fine, and.
I still saw it in the damn groups you got on the hill there, too much of that water, so, and they're all around, so the back.
Yeah, I take a lot of the.
Needs to circulate all through the whole system, not be blocked and looped. And I believe it's the age of spite.
But, but even for that, is, when it is, is then, when you get a problem, all four zones are in the campaign. So that then, you know, right now, with complaints that came in from that last hole out, all were out there. If you have a fully looped system, instead of having 40, 30 foot complaint, we would have had, uh, 150 because that stuff.
That would make shutouts put in there.
That's what I'm saying, that's what, that's what we need to do, is, that's what, that's what we need to do.
Emergency brake or something.
The weather emergency brake, it's a, it's a color rate that, uh, that causes the pressure to, the, the level of the, of the pressure, or the, the level of the color affects who just what in iron and the temperature affected whatever. But without zones, which is what we didn't have until 60 years ago, without zones, you end up with 100% contamination rather than 25% each time.
Well, that's the problem, though, they're up there and they're ready to get contaminated.
Next time, maybe, we might be on here.
Well, mayor, the last time you were mayor, he, um, it was so bad across from the fire hall that it plugged the intakes on our fire trucks.
I remember that, yeah. And that was as solid as, you know, the water.
Yeah.
And just the same, it's like, you can't, you can't clean up dirt, or you can't clean up the water, it's getting bigger. This takes to figure out, unfortunately, it costs a lot of money. And if we did put it on the ballot, it would never pass because some people don't have the problem, so.
We're on the same line, and I have a larger problem than you do.
I know, it's weird, yeah. Yeah, and some people worry, we finally had, you know, it was getting out for clouds.
Sure.
But nothing, you know.
My water's fine. I, I have a whole house water filter, so mine was awful when I was first here. And the one I had had a filter that had a year, is, and I had a kind of a filter in that dark thing every single, every 30 to 60 days, and it's just me. So for a family, it would have been really expensive. I got a different one, and it doesn't do it.
And I got a water filter, I remain lying, kind of into it, and then there's times that I'll change it every month, and it still looks good.
Yeah, mine's, I have one that that flushes down, and it's absolutely fine. I haven't changed it for a long time.
Right, so we're, we're right in the same, we, we got to develop, of course, studies, good study. But then Chris is actually bringing up how, why do you want to expand that study? The, the why do we expand it, the more we're going to pay somebody to, to do that? And, you know, are, are we to the point right now, and here, maybe see what I can find right now, that there is no return, and we're going without them?
I think we're going on that road. I mean, I, I think we have to at this point. Now, you can justify it, you know, when we talk about the certain population that we, we, we thought was going to happen, 15 years ago or whatever, that didn't happen. I think with these road improvements, we're, we're on, we're in a, in for a season.
But, but, you know, when you talk about this already, you want to handle all the road improvements? And the general, with the water tower and whatever, if, there's only definitely to handle so many people, you know? So if you reach the planes where we get over 12, 1500 people, we are working a different zone. And basically, if you, if our town goes from 1,000 people to 500 people, those new 500 people are really going to own their own, and tax them themselves, and, you know, and, and, you know, and doing whatever. So that's really not going to take anything away from this five, six. and doing whatever, so that's really not gonna take anything away from this five, six, seven, or that. That's just gonna have another four million dollars to renew water tower. And if you're going to, and if you're gonna right away treat that, you're gonna end up with a six, seven million dollar gap.
So if, if we put up another well on a water tower, our treatment plants, we really have to pack the water.
Right, right now, you know, Chris and Andy, right now the regime says, this, the system that they will put together will be for a thousand people. You know, if you put a wet well in there, and that adds another, that, that adds another capacity for up to a five hundred, in our case, maybe seven hundred people. But again, if those people are on a different level, or we need to do, or constations, whatever it is, that's where you might look at, is it worth, is it worth putting in, uh, uh, a half million dollar pumping setup? And, you know, whatever, without, uh, it, my, my main point on it is, I don't think you can bank on five hundred people in the future paying for this project, I think this might...
No, 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 I'm just in terms of the, the infrastructure being ready to...
This, this would, this would allow, from what I understand, this back system would, would, would allow for that.
Yeah, and then the population isn't gonna fail itself, it's, it's still gonna be, you know, I don't, I, I, I think it's for that. I mean, it's not gonna be, be an invasion on me, but there are families that, you know, have, you're struggling with a mortgage and everything, and all of a sudden you're dealing with another forty bucks in your water bill and stuff, and all the taxes. It's a hell. You know, and unfortunately, we are a wealthy community in Sioux County.
Yeah, people get that, but, uh, but, uh, we, you know, when we see the justice, you know, we're, we're gonna be twenty, twenty-five percent higher than anybody in Sioux County, we're gonna be fifty percent higher than the sewer, you know, so, uh, that's just the way it is, you know?
Or you got all the cash.
Yeah, I love it, too. We had a great mistake, but...
Well, it's the team sports.
So, uh, so, so, we're, you know, we're happy, everybody here is, you know, forty-six or forty-nine percent, uh, USDA or, uh, D F A money or something, I, we're gonna be anything on low, and if everybody helps me, Russ is gonna be forty-two. You know, maybe we'll be up to forty-seven, forty-eight, maybe, maybe you can shake the noon screen and you'll, and you'll, and you'll give a half million dollars, but...
But it's still a big problem.
Yeah, so just a few things I can add to that a little bit, so, um, we were looking at the treatment side first, and if you don't do the treatment, looking at the distribution side, stuff you can do there is probably, for, that you're still gonna have that cost coming into the system, so as far as what we're doing right now, we're probably in the right path, looking at treatment. And unless you proceed with treatment, there's no reason to start looking at the other stuff. So what you'd be using this pilot study for is, is, uh, two things. One, you can use it as a facility study, try to take it to the legislature and say, I want some monitoring, no money. And this is what we need, is the cost, and this is our information showing you why we need it. Uh, and that's always part of the conversation, if I don't know money, if you can get it. Uh, the second is USDA role development, uh, a good idea might be to have that river come in here and discuss the program, what happened, he's on a great analysis for you on previous numbers, when new numbers come in. You know, what, what USDA does is they look at affordability, and that's where your household income's really come to effect, so, uh, they'll look at and say, you do a affordability, one point five percent of everyone's daily, or everyone's income can go towards their water bill. So they'll come up and say, this is what you're gonna need to pay back a loan with, and everyone can afford to pay, like, eighty, ninety, a hundred dollars a month, I'm saying, comes through, and so the higher community, so, um, and that's a minimum. They could say, maybe, two percent, maybe, three percent for whatever it takes to pay back that loan. So you wanna be able to offset that with grant money, and where you actually have, uh, the worst, the worse your quality water is, the better your arts are, I think grant money is what it really comes down to. If you've got violations, you do more likely to get grant money. Um, if you have, there are other sources we look at, we look at D, we look at some other things that are out there. Uh, and so, uh, we want, would wanna use that facility study based on the treatment side and decide where to go with that. If you go USDA role development, the first step they require is preliminary engineering report. Preliminary report is hold that environmental report, so send a bunch of, bunch of agencies, they'll go over and say, these issues we have, have with it, and, uh, they also do, uh, one thing, taking a treatments community, they do a, a historical archaeological, or even just hire an archaeologist who can support your city, look at the impact, they can tell you, you need a water tower, but you can't, you'll scrap that, or whatever it is, so, uh, but then as far as preliminary report, that's what you wanna look at, and do the whole system, because if you're getting forty-five percent grants for treatment, maybe you'll apply it towards distribution as well, so you can look at a new well, you know, do you need more capacity? Uh, if you have two hundred gallon per minute wells, do you need more than that if you think you're gonna grow? Which is what you're kind of looking to before, but, uh, looking at the big picture, it could be the next step if you proceed with USDA role development especially. Uh, that is an expensive process, uh, probably adds two years to the schedule to, to go with that. But that is what most communities decide to go with, so I, I, I just finished one USDA project, I'm going on currently to the water plant, it's on that, and sort of planning to do a study here. And, uh, that is what most communities decide to, are really kind of looking at. You're trying to get as much rapid in that project as you can, because you're trying to get as much grant money applied towards it, so. So that's, that's the next step.
And that's, that's where I'm going, because the sewer is out, sorry. Chris is laying off steps, these steps are not doing for nothing. Where our, whether, uh, Mr. Anderson wishes or not, we have not increased the water rate any kind of right from, for a long, long time. How many? With the sewer, the sewer would say, well, what happens if you're here, because we did, we did sue sewer, but, but, uh, not the, not the water. Our, our water rate money right now, I think that costed a couple days ago, a hundred and ten users, it's up, it's twenty-one thousand, you know, so I, I was thinking it had to be forty, but if, if he's saying that we're on high, you know, okay, before they hit us a fifty percent grant, he got seventy, eighty bucks a hundred of water, uh, uh, you know, Chris, you're, it's, that's even different than what, uh, what, what I thought, you accept this money, and now you're building this length from, uh, ninety, ninety-three dollars to a hundred and forty-five dollars. But, boy, we got the, we got seven million dollars in grants, and we got no interest loans, and, uh, you know, and, and we got the, the water created at the sewer, you know, so, I mean, that's, and that's where, and, and hoping today is our, our, our strategy, that that's the likelihood of where this is gonna end up, when this is all done, in three, four, five years, for now. And, and if you wait three years, don't put that twenty, thirty, forty dollars on somebody's bill, now you will, now you're not gonna have any choice. We took that dollars on that sewer plant, that I broke up, we didn't, we didn't put any money in there. We, we figured, we're as frightened as the law as they can, and everybody come out and do their thing, but goddamn if they did. You know, so, uh, so, so we, so we, so we, so we increased the rate for that forty dollars, okay? That's still what I'm at, uh, so much that we have to do that twenty-five hundred hour assessment as well, you know, so, so here, uh, you might have to do a six hour assessment, if you don't, if you don't, it's gonna take four years because our disperating costs, our water fund might be set so far in the hole that, uh, that you're gonna be screwed, you know, so there's nothing you gotta do now, but I mean, I think you gotta think about how long, if you're gonna go in with the project, how long are you gonna keep your head in the sand in the sense that, that, that you're gonna, that water rates where, where, you know, where they're at?
And I do think most financial advisors, the youth role development project is not gonna tell you go from twenty to eighty, they're gonna tell you to, they're gonna tell you start, reset bill next month, start building up that fund, because you're, you're saying you're really at negative right now, just from doing the study. And we're talking about a twenty thousand dollar study right now, we're not talking about a six million dollar water plant, whoever else is involved, so the thought of, when you use up the water, Mr. Frank, translate it to, to add to a little bit of fun. And so you'll, you'll see a lot of worse, be able to do it in ten years, you know, if you've done a dollar a year, you know, you can start seeing that certain increase, but, uh, right now you're gonna be making up a lost time. And so you might have to look at some more extreme, and I assume you have a financial advisor to tell you what it takes to do.
We have, but, we have a bomb apart from here, because, uh, because, so you're, yeah, and speaking of, you should have raised your, uh, water rates twenty dollars a month, uh, just like somebody said that there, and like, in fifteen years, you go, well, why? Because, uh, somebody talked about raising rates for twenty, twenty-five dollars a month, and, uh, and there were more people who did this up here, and, uh, and, and also done that, get that out.
I think that's what I call the mayor's man.
Who's that?
I think that was Stephanie. Because I sit in my mayor's mansion, and I just, I'm a protestant.
So, I wonder, you know, that loop up there, I mean, I know that'd be a lot of spring in the hole, but I wonder if it would help the situation, if there's water to sit in there, to flush them off up there.
They're, they're, they're just, they're carrying the water, because those, those polymers, they gotta attach to water, so whenever you clean the water, now, now, now the polymers are out, and I need to reoccupy those polymers, and it takes three days for the polymers to reoccupy, so that's what, what Anderson was referring to, that's most likely what's happened up there, is that wood upsets in the system, and that's, and that area being, um, on its own because it's the lowest pressure I, in this area, the, whenever, whenever something happens, that system basically kind of runs dry, or goes to whatever, so now, so now you have to, you do make it clean up, and clean up for two weeks, like you said, after the function, but now, now the polymers are out, so you got more days with the polymers in the back, and now it's good, and so next time something happens, every, like, every time, uh, trees build a new house, or, or tear a cactus, there's something up there.
That's a success.
That's, that's a, that's, that's what happens, I mean, uh, and, so, that's, that's also why, you know, why that's happened to Mr. Anderson, because there's been, there's been five houses up there in the last year and a half. And so each time, each time they, they actually put those water things in, our system gets upset, and, yeah, you flush out, and now you've got, now the polymers are out, and so now you gotta repair that open, and some of those houses were closed to heat, like, you know, so that's, that's what, and you can't ever say that's a hundred percent true, because, I mean, like, it seems, it seems minor.
Do these people all have water supply systems or not?
They have, you know, it's water supply.
But can I, can I make a comment? When I lived in Lonsdale, they put in a, they like tripled size of their treatment plant because of expected growth, and they had not planned for this at all, and all of the existing systems, overnight, our sewer and water bills tripled. So we were from paying like fifty or sixty bucks a month to paying almost up to two hundred. Don't do that. Start now, like adding five dollars a month, and put that five dollars into a fund specifically to start paying for research or whatever, so that we're not running dry, because obviously I can't afford more than one thousand for five dollars a month, but if you, if you do only like five or ten dollars a month, people aren't necessarily gonna notice.
How many customers do we get?
Four hundred and fifteen, five dollars a month, or twenty-five, or twenty-five thousand, I don't know. Right.
But if you do five dollars a month now, and then another five dollars a month next year, and creep it up, in ten years, you have some money.
Yeah.
Without killing anyone. It's just, I mean, that's certainly...
You pay for study, and...
What do you think? Even twenty-five bucks a month, I don't know if it feels like...
There are, it'll, fifty percent of the people that are on the movement, or, or, no, they didn't, they will usually not be before. I mean, there, there are people that are up every month, and, uh, basically, we're getting, you know, I, I believe, I, I believe too, we're getting the last, still has any other budget for, for that month. And, you know, when it, when it, you know, whatever, it says, nobody goes to last year anyway, but, uh, like...
Well, I think we know where we're going with this, and we probably, we can just take a looking rates, probably just seem too possible, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna, you're taking everything possibly can in January first, or?
Yeah, I think that's it.
Okay.
And from our side, I think you mentioned a workshop, is this gonna be like entertaining council meeting? Would you like to have a special meeting just for that? And I don't want everyone here for that.
I think, I, I don't know, my personal opinion is a workshop, advertise that we're gonna be told what's gonna, um, what we're gonna be told. Um, and then, you know, if it goes more than an hour, if it goes more than an hour, if people have questions of it. I, I think put it before council meeting, and then have the meeting start at seven, and then us have to cut people off. Because that's gonna piss people off.
No, I'd like to do this, this is a workshop.
And, and with the workshop, do you, you can have workshop whole days, where you have a public participation or just a workshop where people are, are, it's open, but, uh, either a list, the listening section or a lot?
As long as we maintain a listening section, you know, rather than a participation session, because then the system will break down a little bit more than we had tonight.
I mean, and then, if you have, if you...
But it is what it is, we can possibly be...
Yeah, if you have a close to the next regular meeting, you know, which, you're thinking, might, might be a holder's gonna be ready, the report's gonna be, we discussed it, and bring a draft report to your October meeting, and then if you wanna make modifications, additions, changes, we have the ability to do that, uh, for the number of the drafts, so.
So we agreed draft to that tour meeting.
Or what if, I mean, you did a, a, a session in three weeks, and by a week, they have a report ready? Not by a different, but I mean, three weeks, two weeks?
It seems reasonable, yeah, what I was told, they, they could have a report ready for October meeting. We were just gonna drag, drag out the draft, but we met beforehand, uh, had the weeks, making revisions, that seems appropriate, and say, if you want some more final for that tour meeting, you can probably do it.
I mean, what if you did, uh, like a folder, put a firm money in a book, what if you did a preliminary review, draft, whatever, on that first Monday, with the idea that they provide the information, the advertising section? And then if, let people know when they were at that meeting, and if they wanted to have comments, and what's going on, they could make those comments on the folder, or, could maybe do that at their, at the next regular meeting.
Why don't we give them something a little bit of a second, maybe?
Okay, but, but you have a final report, huh?
Well, I'd like to talk to all the people that need to be here to bring this forward, because when we start, first Monday, everyone has a council meeting.
Okay, I'm asking, first, whatever, if you want to do Thursday, whatever, it's, yeah, first Monday, they'll be on a...
Are they running this plan stick, can we, we have a plan stick?
Oh, we, we can, we take the Friday, and then give it to your hour, yeah.
Now, it's a special comment, and, I, I, they're the ones doing the work, so I don't wanna speak for them, but we did talk about this meeting with the city, I think, late September, early October, to provide preliminary findings, and put that into the court, which will provide with that October council meeting, regular council meeting.
Well, my, my thing, my opinion is, we wanna have that, a workshop, open session, but it would be a listening session for, for, for the, for the public, you know, we'd get it out there, encourage the public to bring up whatever questions, or whatever, or, or, we're there, uh, putting reflections up at the, uh, at the global meeting when we make the final report.
Sure. Yeah, that's fair.
Okay, well, let's, then we want to talk about the, uh, the sewer project.
Yes, yeah, so what I have for you, we'll start off with the application, uh, application number ten, which is, uh, essentially just what client, where it first paid, that happens, and that's one thing that's... So, uh, that is a amount of ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and two dollars and ninety-six cents, and that's just for work W W W, uh, two weeks ago, or the nature of that laptop thing. Uh, they've not, like I said, they're not requesting payment for anything else up the stack. And I just wanted to, like, do a, do a...
I just got a question, I want to, I want to sign my mind, is there a razor manhole in the intersection of Main Street and, or Third?
Yeah, so the contractor, uh, was on a contract to fix that, what happened is there's a paving ring in the, in the street, it was installed prior to Minda paving project, it came out. Um, so it wasn't, it wasn't part of the project to repair, but the contractor was, was requested to fix it. He said they'd fix it, they had to fix it. So, um, I have contacted Minda, they said we can fix it, I didn't... So um I have contacted Minda, they said we can fix it under the permit. So um but GM mentioned, I guess we met them three or four weeks ago, they said that he wants to do that still and they said, he said, yes, and I said, they're going to do it, so they have it. So I guess what that said is a change order, much of the pricing from them is going to be, they said they're going to do it. Uh you were like contractor in town, I'm going to do it too, so it's something to consider if you want to ask here. They did their price cheaper, quite honestly.
You guys can go to that department.
It's I thought Steve showed with Minda, he said it become a permit. The only thing I'm sure you do is if they don't just call it, they're the traffic, it's good work, we need a little bit of traffic control.
So it doesn't have to be GM or whoever, somebody else in there.
No.
Do you have that email from Steve?
I do, yeah, the only. Yeah, the only thing Steve asked for was traffic control. And so he may actually, that's, it's going to take him probably an hour to work, it's going to take him a long amount of time to track control and stuff. Uh it isn't Minda, I was thinking thirty, but yeah, I'll I'll look at it, I contacted Steve, uh I'm wondering if it'll already land out still. Uh but yes, that I think it's good rest before winter for sure, Steve talked about barrels shouldn't be in the middle of the road now, it definitely shouldn't be when it's a while. Welcome to town, as it were. So there's a lot of orange signs up there still, they'll be putting back out when they get their paving, and they got to get those out again. They did remove once, it looks like they're raving on again for the road closed signs, so. Uh we do have bunches items, I walked the project last week. Uh they've got a lot of cleaning up to do in the curb. I couldn't do my thorough curb review because it's blacktop all right right now. They did a very messy uh, usually the curb is Latin American, so I told many of them on their shovel things, we fell off, then I can get more thorough reviews. So um there's a top somewhere to be fixed up, some of the a lot of storm sweaters need to be cleaned out, things like that. They did cut through on Monday due to overseeding, I believe, uh it's called their company on Monday. And uh that was a drill seater, it looks like both last few months that were were left. Two of the residents, seven of three had long lines, has has not to cut it by the way, so if you saw those, made requests, has not to cut.
So they still have a little more to do on the curb original?
There's kind of a little bit of dirt, two residents have called us saying.
I I want to say that I'm going to.
Okay, and then uh.
Did you want to engage about about where we're going to shop?
The one to force me? Or there's a there's a gate valve over, yeah, over that area.
And North Third.
North Third, yeah. Uh so it's, yeah, I think that I I asked them to look at it before they found a pavement and did kind of settle into a little bit. I looked at it recently, I guess, it got any worse, right, their pavement looked like it had kind of come down a little bit. Uh but when I stepped on it, it was a little bit windy. You know, we stepped on the Russell, we stepped on the Bally moving. Okay, so we have one issue at the turn market, Third Street North, where we thought we had a leaky gate valve. And what actually ended up happening is that the water had gotten very blacktop and pretty little blistered. So they ran over the roller for the workforce, it starts squirting up through the through that and so um pretty usual for that happens, we do it during the time of the road, it should have dried all out, but I think they were in the air too before we did the workforce paving. Um so I guess that's one thing to look at, is if it actually is trapped water, but I don't think that'd be the case, especially now, should have tried by now.
But I can answer you.
I think it's a little hard because it's a small block, we should have it up.
Okay, yeah, so you need to come through with a little mix and fix it up, but we'll be done for that. We do have a warranty to make you find these things the next, well, basically, we're in June, uh to June next year, there will be some smaller areas.
Right, now you have a curb or anything like that.
Yeah, like I said, I couldn't, I marked a couple spots and there's just too much stuff on the curb, we're going to see it all. If one thing I can say is that the the little liner stuff, you don't notice anymore, so I had to get, uh the stuff that's around the face of the curb especially. Uh it looks a lot better since it's got blacktop pushed up to it, so. Blacktop has a rough edge, so it kind of hides a lot of stuff. I just want to make sure the major ones, the structural ones get taken care of.
Yeah, the big ones.
Yeah, because I think that the minor things, uh it's when we need blacktop paving, it's due to like the quarter tire and the concrete, so. Uh so the real minor stuff did get covered in, but I know this this will be a fair time.
That's still be a lot of anything, because you know, we're talking or we're covering up a spot, it depends on the job.
Yeah, that's the the bigger ones, when they're kind, there were some just kind of rough edges and those I do find with, but that's the ones in the face of the curb, I want to make sure to address them. That's why I wanted to clean it up, because I think there's just too much unwrapping at the end of that blacktop, that needs to be, needs to be gone before I come early and look into it.
Is there anything white dirt that went along the parking lot and went everywhere?
The uh area I identified, uh it's like wherever the little that basin is, yeah, there's a little bit of smart dirt there that identified, I had a south pole heavy, um definitely needs some.
Since I talked to the last, they haven't done anything, right?
They haven't done anything yet, no.
So whatever, you have little things down there, fix another thing, now I gotta take another thing, so.
It's yes, yeah, if you have that, it's it's.
Well, basically, I should, I guess I need to be much better. There is a number of talks that I don't know all that they're not going to happen. You sound like I have a work line curb.
Okay, they did point before, I thought, I mean, once the grass is coming in, a lot of little stuff. I mean, I don't say it's hidden, but it looks like everywhere along the town currently at this point. So I mean, once the grass comes in, it looks a lot worse when it's just black dirt.
Right, and people are hypersensitive because it's taking so long.
Okay, and then we talked before, it's a question of service thing at this point.
Well, I guess that's like over, over, you said the oversea Monday afternoon, if they did some of that stuff, then they did nothing, it's like.
Are you sure they got oversea? Well, they said they're doing it Monday morning and.
Yeah, I know what they said, but didn't they?
They were there. They were there, I know that they were on North Forest Street.
Yeah.
Doing something. Yeah, and they were, they overseeded, there should have been some dirt blocking down.
Right.
There was a wall gone. This crew is with the overseeder, uh any areas that maybe filled with black dirt, broadcast, you know, top, you know, just be, we don't oversee areas that need more work. Because they private through it with the overseeder, but it's a different process.
So basically, they don't know the seeding places that were flat and looked like they were decent, so uh safety presented with thoughts that you were, they shifted because they weren't done. If I can say.
I mean, the overseeder was meant to supplement the areas that were already had grass, because we are, we have patchy areas, we want to fill in those gaps, so. Because areas need more work than that, they were supposed to do it the first time, and most areas look good, but they get rain, it settles in, that's there's more exposed areas. This is kind of chasing herself a little bit.
So far all these are responses, they're not done yet, right?
Yeah, they're not done, I guess it's still the right response, we need to push more black dirt and see if it's what they're trying to do, so, and what I'm saying.
Well, everybody happy.
Then if you can work on the road closed signs still though, um people on Tuesday night don't know if they should go down the road or not go down the road. Okay, yeah, yeah.
Like I said, I thought you were on the office.
Well, there's like four or five in the town, I don't see if they should put them back to do the paving, but yeah. They're supposed to put a south pole limits where they have tile and.
Yeah, okay, they're ready to throw a sign, yield sign, whatever, if you come up with a new traffic control back or something, when you do do a job.
We shouldn't change anything.
Oh, okay.
If we did, please let me know, because.
I just, I I don't know, maybe, you know, if you go to a new sign back or something, it has to be some kind of new area authority control.
Uh yeah.
No, they they put, maybe they went, they left the results, but uh they obviously go by whatever they originally buy.
Or it's a chance.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I would not want to make a change if that's not counted, usually.
Well, honestly, because we're not, we're, I thought we had a regulatory site to make over, that'd be decided, that's where the book you go.
Yeah, usually like I would, well, call it safety is impact, because if if somebody has a stop sign on the state, also.
No, that's what's happening out there, they always, uh I have a field sign that all of them are spot.
Okay, I didn't know that, so. This person may, I want to change it, you're in the wrong.
So you actually have to decide.
That's okay. Okay, but now that a couple of people have signed, you've got more on the ground for it. So you can make a change.
There we go, yeah.
I know, look for that, and see what's there, so we need to modify that, so. Uh what I do still for you is the application.
So the ninety-two thousand?
Uh it's ninety, it's on the road or whatever.
All right, so it's off the bills. So we'll prove the bills when we get there.
Right.
Yeah.
And is that just for the blacktop?
Yes.
Yes.
Right.
Yep. So if the council is still only five percent retained on the project, um where would I be able to afford a higher? I mean, that should be fifty thousand. Uh just kind of looking ahead here, I I expect to have a final pay application with the next, hopefully the next council meeting. Uh or very close to it, the month after that is, so uh I have asked the contractor to clarify all the quantities. Um what he is going to do is basically work with his subcontractors, consolidate all their quantities, make sure things are in variance and, you know, I think I give them waiver for them. Once they say that's how much they work, I did, and it's the number we need to double measure if needed, but uh the way we're looking at right now is that the original contract amount was one point nine five six million. Uh the current amount uh current date is at one point nine four three million, so slightly under budget overall. Uh and that's including the change orders that had previously been approved, so. Uh I might get some obligations from this, the contract guy said I did expedite curve and they're giving whatever, who gave them lie, but uh I do expect to come in uh very close to the original contract amount. Uh and that's uh without considerations of the painting and everything, so.
Deduct or whatever, right, I think you're.
Or deducts or anything to that, yeah, so as it sits right now, it's, as of today, worth thirteen thousand dollars under budget. Uh we'll see where we are when we're in close balance, I mean, that's certainly a positive, because I know we changed earth for some work last year and uh looks like we had enough. You know, we we always have a little bit of contingency in our in our quantities, especially when we're out there, we need to add a little sidewalk somewhere or do a little extra work. Blacktop usually have a five percent contingency to it, and so um I'm hoping that uh that kind of offset it with the full cost, so. I do expect to come in fairly close to that that number again, but uh I'll wait for final reconciliation with those subcontractors, so.
Sounds good.
I think on that third third main manhole, if we can get, um maybe it's busy with Mill Street, I think if we get there to fix that, we should.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. They'll they'll be cheaper.
Well, I wouldn't be able to do that for hours.
You're done, yeah.
You're really done.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thanks.
See you next month. Just sell them.
Okay, on the Bell Street thing, maybe you started on that, so uh I don't know, all all the time and done. Just going to be subgrading, blacktop, we'll. Did run into a couple of utilities that, we had a couple there, but there's a four inch, I have to have a three by, okay, I'll take four inch.
Really?
On that side. That's where we got, just got across that. And then there's uh one paper, which is too much. That was forwarded. We buy this, that, so we might have to cross ones.
Should go where they want. Did you see a follow up then with a little other smaller angle there, I think, that there?
Yeah, that was planned.
I think we should go up, that's fine, five stop, I'll go where the market.
Cross that church there.
Yeah. And one that's.
One's going to be on the church shoulder, but.
And one that's not the old, that's pretty, that's pretty. That's bad, I mean, I said that.
Which one?
Just like sixty-five, it's been. It's been uh a hundred and ten. What is it, and one over, whatever.
Oh, it's washed.
Across that.
Yeah.
Sorry, you know, streets go with the patch, I don't know what.
Where to start.
Hey, I would, I would be too worked up with a whole lot of catching on some of those, I mean, some of those I take there themselves and give them projects or, and that's the one, anyway, I mean.
Got some of the school pieces back, you know, getting over here.
And I think, you know, for a while, I had so much of that, which is that, uh, that was something.
Oh, yeah. That's great, they did it, it's great.
Yeah, because there were a lot of years ago where we did that traction stuff. After a year ago, we did a lot of the traction. Anything else, buying was barely out, it was a fake rock.
Uh we are, I did that till maybe on the end, I decided bottom of Mill Street. For the gap tracing of the curb, the plateless, and it's only six feet, maybe not. I said there's no something in that, and the guys are there, and you fix it.
Yeah.
It's more safety than fixing anything. Since it's a stormwater, unless you think differently.
Yep, yep.
Sounds good.
So.
All right, well, we launched that, the uh southern, the southern initiative uh grant, the design team came through, so when that happens, that's covered. And uh doing a grant bill there to support for the group that's lobbying the county for a detached trail next to twenty-one six. Uh funding includes a light show in twenty-one six, but it's absolutely not even worth doing because of traffic. If you don't separate it, you might as well not do it at all, so that's that's the focus of our lobbying with the county commissioners, so.
For your preference to that, I don't know, so.
Yeah.
There's a thing about structure, it's not something to do.
Oh, yeah.
It's nice, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, anybody, you know, the die tires, it's still right at my, sure, but it's changing, like. Yeah, so, but that's that's proceeding, that there's a good chance that it'll bend or hopefully.
Would it be worth kind of having this in a article, asking people to write in support to their companies?
Well, actually, no.
Well, like having some shirts or.
Yeah. Everybody, that's the key group we have to get on.
Okay.
On the word, yeah, that'd be wonderful.
If we do get a personal meeting with the county commissioners, do we like to have a lot of attendance?
Yeah.
But we're waiting to hear if Phil will be with us.
Well, yeah, just let us know.
I think it's a council, any?
No, with.
The group.
The the letter, on the letter.
The second meeting?
Thank you, yes, it's like a meeting, but we want to send the community members there to offer support, so the commissioners will.
Their teams. That's, sounds good. All right, so we got a little classes done, we got bills, bills paid. Everybody got all the bills? Everybody love them? Yeah, I'm talking about mission. All right. Who wants to make a motion?
I.
Ready to the second, all three signify by saying aye. Which made carry and the. You want to tell us what the cash balance is?
I see there's nothing here for the whiteboard.
Okay, good. When your license is done, okay.
Right, no.
That's another for the.
When we when we approve that last one, I know license, it is all during, you have that Friday Sunday, you decide that last week, and then do that Friday, take that Friday, last Monday, and go over there. So uh we might have to send one more application to the table.
I'll make a motion for that.
Second.
Motion made second and all, you signify by saying aye. All right, now, twenty twenty-two preliminary budgets and tax.
When I sent you the first time, uh I, we can change up any month, I did go five percent from any, you get the five percent, that's over five, that's five. Represents the one resolution to full budget, the others, and get this fee for none of these, because you want, at this point, you can't, this whole thing yet, just can't go higher by the end of December. One thing I did, clearly, I updated that levy table that I gave you a couple of months ago, so that had a lot of over levy. One thing I did, clearly, I updated that levy table that I gave you a couple months ago, so that had a lot of lower levy, uh, just assuming the same. But just basically projects that out, but with that, it still allows for a lower tax levy in two thousand and twenty-five, and once they're known, and you can do whatever you want, with some of those things, uh. I don't wanna, I don't wanna, that dress too much, it's a water project anymore, but I guess they took any grants, they didn't give USDA funds or whatever, that's all, only a potent, hot, uh, utility project, you're supposed to, to use your pay, use your fee base, not that levy base. I suppose you can change that if you want, but then you have to, you basically not, basically wouldn't get, use that money, and you, you basically do a, a, a separate.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I want you, if, you could use your levies to do that, you would have to do that as a, as a border revenue. So you, in theory, could, could do that if your levy two thousand and twenty-five, seven, three ninety-one, and you want to make it five ninety-one, you could, in theory, uh, do what you want to follow dollars for a year, levy these gifts for water. You know, which, uh, it's, but, again, that's something to do, that's a big, you can pick a border, you know, up there, uh, what is, and maybe another key thing on a year or two is, you know, we get, we get jacked up on not having enough, they have a fund now, you know, and that's basically the, the reason why is when tile was created, which is two years ago now, since he hired, it was, we, we've got to make a deal with fund now, it's, it's three oh one, we use that money a long time ago, they all, that, uh, that still developed up on, you know, like, you know. So, we, we never really get, we're gonna pay that back over, uh, twenty years, and so, with this schedule, what we can try to do, that we adopted last year, two years ago, was to zero that fund out and not ask for general, so the reality is, you know, when you look at that levy, you acknowledge this year, our impact from, because you said it was increases by five percent, our impact from sixty-two thousand, fifty-two thousand, one fifty-eight thousand in two thousand and twenty-two. I mean, if you wanted to get that back in the U.S., or what do I state, audit, we could put that hundred thousand out of the general fund, and you'd be well over your fifty percent balance, but it wouldn't be the advantage that's in your, uh, in your debt service account, because, uh, because it wouldn't be in there, it means your, it wouldn't be in your general fund. I mean, that's, what a lot of people understand about all the state dues, your, your, uh, your audience information is, they break it up into general fund, and then your debt service fund, your water fund, your utility fund, which are water, sewer, the water, sewer, all supposed to, principles to cash flow on their own, uh, the debt service is supposed to cash flow on its own, and the general fund is supposed to cash, cash flow on its own. You can levy for the debt service, uh, and you can, and you can levy for the general, but you can't levy for, you know, you shouldn't say you can't, you can levy in the sewer, because we did levy in sewers, but you can't, you can't levy in water without a special, uh, dis, uh, dispensation, dispensation from the state to do it, so. I guess in theory, you could, if you wanted to, if you had something, you could, you want to invest with that levy, and do something to pay for the water out there, you could somehow change your fees, I guess, and levy in sewer, and, and make your fees move more, or, if you want to do that, it would.
Well, and I'll just say, you know, but if may I, um, propose the five percent for at least this meeting, knowing that we can always lower it in December. I know mine's about three percent, but the cola for next year is five percent. Um, I think, you know, keeping our levy, we've been staying for so many years, really got us in a terrible spot.
No, I, I find it five percent. Is your answer?
Yes. We haven't had anybody that fits that case me for interquoting, one thing they found a problem, that I would be shocked if a dozen people are here from West New Haven with, with even a one percent rate.
Yeah.
But, what most people don't, we haven't had, we haven't had to explain this for a long time, but, uh, if you're, I mean, going to new numbers, uh, basically, your, if your property value is a hundred sixty thousand dollars, uh, and you're, and you go to Henderson, you go up two or three percent, those people don't notice it, I mean, uh, both government agents and home security agents and all that, like, but if you're at three hundred fifty, you're one hundred thousand. A zero percent levy, that's why Steve is saying his taxes went up every year for, oh, they do, because, uh, as the valuing basis, his, his levy is going to increase. So, one percent, they're probably giving taxes six or eight percent, five percent, they're probably giving taxes taxes, but anywhere from twelve to fourteen percent, you know, and, and, and he, and he go on there, leaving the whole thing at home, you know, so, just, so that you're, you're, you're aware that, when he comes in and shows you his taxes, I mean, that it's been a show that will win, probably all, maybe fourteen, possibly fifteen percent, like a five percent increase. I mean, don't even, don't even tell me about that, because if you leave it at home, it's been the same, you know, so, uh, I mean, it's, it's been a lot, because, just because of the way home thing, or the health thing, or whatever.
Alright, so at this point. We have our resolution. Two thousand, twenty-one, oh, six, adopting the twenty-two, twenty twenty-two proposed budget, whereas the city council desires to adopt proposed budget control monitor, preferences and expenditures for twenty twenty-two, or as the city council would do, discuss this proposed budget, the resulting tax levy, and taxes payable in twenty twenty-two, at today's meeting, now therefore, we resolve that, put that given title of proposed annual budget, the city gets on the fiscal year, January first of twenty-two, from year twenty-eight, budget twenty twenty, due today. Next year, budget twenty twenty-two, we refer this resolution, the budget resulting tax levy, we discussed at the public hearing, recorded by the city council meeting, scheduled to start this September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, in the meeting room, in the community building. Uh, at which the public will be allowed to speak and testify at this tax levy, of this budget tax levy, adopted this fifteenth day of September, twenty twenty-one. Well, I'm. What's being said? It's called, we pay the six and five, I say. Close?
Yes, sir.
This is the one, next one? That's it?
Don't sign the next one, I guess, alright. You can read it, it goes like, can't approve, it's all over here.
Alright. Alright, anything else?
You got the, the, two thousand and twenty-one, right?
Oh, two thousand and twenty-one, right, five, I forgot. Alright. Let me get this still, we're at city council, considering this set of twenty twenty-two proposed tax levy, and it's general, special, our new debt service, we're funding a special assessment funds, uh. For the total for the twenty twenty-two, eleven, of five hundred and sixty-five, uh, this tax levy is scheduled, we discussed at the public hearing, the ready, ready city council, beginning of September sixteenth, in this meeting room, at which the public will be allowed to speak on this tax levy.
On September, September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, uh, your name, you gotta go on there. Yeah, I know, I got, I got that one on my stuff.
Wow, this is. I'll, I'll take the most, rest of that.
I was through, uh, so it was in twenty twenty-one, that's.
That's why I don't say that, I don't care.
Who said?
Sorry.
Alright, I wanted to say that all three signify by saying aye, close, which may carry. Yeah, there's everything else.
A meeting.
Uh.
Just wanna wait on that, and you wanna make them up with the date, and what?
Well, I think that's what we have to do, because the city, whatever, we get everybody, yeah, so.
But apparently, they didn't want to give a week, because information, I don't think, a lot of that, so, uh, yeah.
But, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, are we gonna go fly, is, do people want to pull wire up on the trees, or is that been done yet, or does someone need to be trimming?
Bruce usually go there and does it, yeah.
But I haven't done it.
No, no. That's annual.
Do you have anyone running after your work? Do you think people that run the rolling is gonna pick up your garbage next year, instead of taxpayers paying, Bruce is picking it up?
Well, does he have to pick it up, or is he just going to bag?
Well, he likes to, he likes to play there, he can play there, I think, he can take it down.
Well, let's, let's just kind of do it.
Most of them, I.
Yeah, plenty of them on here, so I can do it.
I mean, it's fine, if they, or they, or possibly they pick up, but the option is definitely out, it all, Bruce goes on, there's the.
Yeah, and, and, and I think it's always a danger of people being more and more critical of the rolling, because it's in a position for, probably seventy percent of the population, and it doesn't receive a value of, of, they do, perceive that, and the more we can make them, it's self-sufficient, less people have to, you know.
Yeah. Because there are other people complaining about, I'll come over, they're coming here.
Yeah, yeah, I know, yeah. Well, yeah, I think it's a long, long hair now, because they're good.
These are your gap law problems, that's what they're about, they're all for that.
No, no, that's fine, yeah.
Right, that's, yeah, that's fine, I mean, that's, we got, we got more plans to maintain for the leverage, and we got, and Bruce.
Right.
It's the worst.
Penny's added the dollars.
Yes. Okay. Alright.
A meeting scheduled, I don't want for parkour meetings to get added for next month and the H H P C, and there's some things that need to be discussed.
And the parkour, they were, they were, something came back on the, on, hey.
Yeah, we're supposed to, you have to, there's a meeting Friday. Uh.
Coming Friday, I think.
But, uh, I think I thought it was coming up.
I think that's, that's a good way to, was, uh, what to get going on next Friday, and we have others in there.
Because I think I need all my, I want to parkour today, on something that needs to be discussed. And then something for the H H P C was brought to my attention, so I don't know who's gonna be running the meetings, now that he is not president, so.
I don't have a way.
Need to count me, they should elect a new, um, president or chairperson.
Yeah, like, you know, we'll keep it, we're interested in you on it, but.
Like, we should figure that out.
Well, should we put a parkour meeting at six o'clock before the next council meeting?
Wow, well, if you really wanna, if it gets to the point where you're talking about those other grounds and park and field projects and whatever, you're never gonna get that out before the next council.
Okay, we're, we're talking, we're, whenever the, the, you guys are gonna be, you're gonna be, uh, pretty, and I'm, I'm not far, we're, with any of some of that failed stuff, uh, but that already decided, we're gonna get out, for sure, missions are gonna go, that, that's gonna, that's, that's gonna evolve into, uh, what's going on with the park thing, and also
once we're done, we ever get our agreement with them, then that's gonna evolve into what's been along with, 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 with Alan's fire, so. As, as when you talk about issues, I mean, are there issues like this in our areas, or are there issues like, uh, let's do a land project, and do whatever?
I believe it was a part of the line stuff.
Oh, the email that I sent out? My fault.
Okay, it is, okay.
Okay, well, yeah, what, I mean, what do you, what, what do you wanna, what, what do you wanna happen?
Well.
I'm, I'm pregnant, it's pretty hard for me to, to have a meeting when you guys are doing bullshit, and bullshit between each other, and, uh, I, I, I'm, I'm sick, I'm sick of that.
I know, I never sense anything out.
I know, I know, but I, I'm, uh, I'm not gonna sit there and call, why isn't there any, or anything, and you guys are sending your own bullshit back and forth, and you're sending stuff to someplace, so, have, have your own freaking duty to do, I mean, that's, that's, uh, I'm, I'm fed up with that.
Shouldn't be the chairperson of each, maybe that.
No, because we, I guess, I said, I don't want to say anything, so, so, there's, somebody's gotta, somebody's got to run the circus to figure out who's got the team doing, you know, doing whatever, so, no.
So apparently, the Lions Club wanted the parkour to discuss whether or not the city would supply somebody at the skating rink.
Well, we wanted to know if there was support, and that was something that you brought up at the last meeting.
Right, but the, the skating rink has been funded by the city for twenty years.
Well, as I was, I was just asking if that was gonna continue.
Well, I, it's in the back, to continue it, yeah.
Okay, then, that answers the question.
Okay, let's go back to that.
I thought there was a parkour meeting tonight, I was not gonna be able to be there because I'm faked it, so I was simply asking the question, but I didn't know there wasn't a meeting.
And I replied back and said, there's only one tonight.
And I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, and I was told last time that we were being called last week on, because it wasn't busy, because of projects, and we were gonna follow me when, when these projects got put together, and as far as, we're going on all the project in society, and that you were following after there was something to do.
Okay.
That's, yeah.
Well, the meeting on Friday was just a guy going over.
What's going on, and whether we should go into the next, see the project, and we're waiting for recognition to do what Jeff and Ryan and ones that are saying, you know, and then doing all the park things, or maybe do what's going on with, you know, with, with the trails thing, and how far we're gonna take that project into doing whatever.
You mean, you're talking about what's very hit on us?
And standing on that, because, because, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have to, if we're gonna do something, I mean, that's another substantial bank allocation, that we're gonna have to put together, but probably have to do that by February or March of this year, but I don't think, unless you think we're ready, we're ready yet, so.
Okay.
Not right now.
And then, uh, Patrick, you probably won't, you probably won't have us ready by, by next month either, because you've got a drug to learn, or.
Yeah, I, I guess, I don't, you know, I don't, I don't know.
Next time.
You know.
Next time, five, we're not having any.
Well, I, 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 I finally have to leave, but, uh, because the meeting is just too, bits about, uh, not having, not having a meeting, and not, not the form that's going to go on, I mean, all of that does is turn into a luggage.
Alright, none of this, anything's there.
You gotta, they give proof, they.
No, we have one in the mail. Too late, no.
Okay, thank you.
No, we're gonna continue.
Sorry, you want me to lie here?
It's alright, nobody.
No, I was at work, and I'm, I, I need to come back for parkour tonight. Why are you in the mailroom when I see you answered?
If, if, if we have a meeting, we should have a meeting to do, but it just, it seemed like that goes on forever, we should have a meeting to check that street project, and, you know, go over whatever, but it doesn't seem like anything ever, for those stacks together, where it would, it, you know, not, if we lived something we would do, we could tomorrow, or all again, because that stuff is, was crap, is, will black out, and, you know, whatever, so I don't know. I don't know if we're just gonna run the clock on this damn thing, and we're ending up with a piece of crap, or.
Well, and my position on it is, it's help, it's help, we could come, contact every resident, you know, that's been touched by that project, and say, are you happy? I don't hate them, because it's, 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 they've antagonized, you know, those people, and, you know, a lot of them are just, you know, antagonized as a rule, but we have no defense, you know, it, it's like, they, they don't like the.